I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First, business, Nancy, if you would be so kind as to do a roll call.
Dennis Johnson.
Here.
Dwayne Jones.
Here.
Linda Shiller.
Here.
Did I say that right?
Shiler.
Shiler. I knew I'd not do that.
There's not a "sh" in it though, just "syl," like S-Y-L.
Okay. Shelley Mamberto.
Here.
Glenn Zerring.
Here.
John Beach.
Here. Nancy? We have an agenda before us here. Before we do that, I do have one quick amendment to the agenda. I would like to insert some comments from the chair in the public hearing in section six at the very beginning. And with that, are there any questions or corrections to the agenda? First, I believe we do have to take a vote on any changes to the agenda. So I'd like to see if--
Do you have a motion to approve the agenda as presented, as amended?
Okay.
And seconded.
May I have a second, Dwayne? And Nancy, if you could take a roll. Wait, excuse me. Just a point of order. Do we have to take a roll since we're not on Zoom?
No. You can just do a voice vote.
Thank you.
All those in favor and all those opposed.
Right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. And now we will look to an approval of the agenda.
Minutes, right.
Do I have a motion?
Can we just approve the agenda?
I thought we-- No, we approved the change to the--
You approved the change.
The change?
Yeah.
Okay. I would move that we approve the agenda.
Support.
We have a motion, it's a second, approval of the agenda. And I'd like to ask is there a vote? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. All right, now we have approval of the minutes. Now, this is from the February 18th of 2021 meeting. And they were pre-approved, I believe, Nancy, by--
They were done by email.
All right.
Because of the timeframe in between--
Right. So do we need any action this evening on that?
No.
All right, thank you. Okay, now we move into the section on public hearing. And as I mentioned, I do have some comments first.
Go ahead.
Go ahead. You have to state the time and open the public hearing.
Thank you for the correction there. Public hearing is open at 7:04, I believe that says. All right. Before we start, I'd like to welcome our newest members, some of whom I had not met recently. So thank you very much for joining us. And as a way to welcome you, but also to remind our city members of the position and the authority of the zoning Board of Appeals. As chairman, here are some comments that I would like to make. First, I want to remind everyone that the city's zoning Board of Appeals is the only quasi-judicial body in city government. And it has the power and authority to interpret upon request the provisions of city ordinances in such a way as to carry out the intent and purpose of said ordinances. I'll quote from section 2507 under duties and powers. "The zoning Board of Appeals shall not have the power to alter or change the zoning district classification of any property nor to make any changes in the terms of intent of this ordinance. It does have power to act on those matters whereby statute or in this ordinance provisions made for administrative review, interpretation, variance, or exception as defined therein." End quote. Secondly, "The zoning Board of Appeals may classify a use which is not specifically mentioned as part of the use regulations of any zoning district, so that it thereby conforms to a comparable permitted or prohibited use in accordance with the purpose and the intent of each of the districts. Our decision is not site-specific, but addresses zoning interpretations across the board." Third, this evening, we have an appeal of alleged misinterpretation of an ordinance regarding the accessory use by the planning department. I'd like to state the decision before the ZBA as whether to honor the original peninsula zoning intent or to allow modification for convenience sake. An issue that comes from this is a reason for determination cannot be for convenience sake, but rather because of following the true intent of the ordinance. So I just wanted to make that clear to everybody so you know what our actual powers and authority are here. Are there any questions about that? Okay, hearing none. I believe, Zach, do you take it up or no?
Yeah, I think at this time it would be appropriate to have Mr. Spalding present what he has and then move on to public comment after.
Sounds good. Mr. Spalding, if you would, please take the podium and let us know what's going on.
My name is Marty Spalding. I am the owner of the Milwaukee House and several other pieces of property around town that we've been diligently working on. There's a PowerPoint behind you up there that shows two of the properties that are most proximate. At the top left side, you'll see the intersection of Cypress Street in between Mason Street and River Street. That's the gas station that is tonight's source of a little bit of controversy. There are a couple of pieces behind that that we have also acquired. And then across and below that, you'll see the location of the Milwaukee House and three properties to the south of that that we've also acquired and are contemplating combining into that project, which is kind of a separate thing. But I kind of wanted to just lay out the proximity of what's going on here and maybe give you a little insight into what we're working on. The Milwaukee House is intended, once we get through with the parking lot that's coming in for site plan review fairly soon, that's gonna--is going to be at a fairly upscale, dinner-only kind of a dining establishment. We don't anticipate being open for lunch or breakfast or renting rooms or doing anything like that. It's pretty much just going to be food service there. And it may be seasonal. It's a pretty big operation, and I've had several of them. And when it's February, nobody's coming in the door, $3,000 electric bill isn't--sometimes it's easier just to do away with it. The Milwaukee House will contain a fairly large kitchen that we're going to be making a lot of things in that are sold at the other property. The other property by design is basically going to be a deli. It's going to include not just some food--excuse me, food items, but we're going to be retailing some other things out of there as well. A lot of that is still kind of--the balls are still in the air. We're still figuring out exactly what we're going to do. We anticipate probably selling some things that are made by others in the community as well. So that's kind of an overview of what's going on there. To date, we have spent probably in the neighborhood of a million and a half dollars. None of that's borrowed. None of that is somebody else's. That's all mine. So you could go to the next slide. We've made a number of improvements in the neighborhood. I think most of you can remember when the tanks came out. We took down the canopy that used to be over the front of the gas station, tore out the asphalt parking lot that was in the front. The entire frontage of this property on 31 was all completely wide-open curb cut. The plan is to eliminate that and have all access to the property from beside streets. Obviously, Cypress and River Street has a light at the intersection. If you could go to the next one. This was one of the beauties that we tore down that was behind the gas station. You may remember that one. It didn't need air conditioning because it had lots of open-air points of entry for birds and other critters to get in there. So that's gone, as is the one next to it, that the folks at the Boyer Agency were more than happy to sell to me because every time it got below 30 degrees, the water lines underneath froze. It was a constant source of kind of a headache for them. So those two structures have both been removed. There are a couple behind there. There's a garage that we plan on using for just storage. There's another building there that we'll probably use for office purposes or something of that nature. If you go to the next one. You may remember this edifice behind the Milwaukee House that used to be the old Michigan Bell Service Garage. When I got around to it, you can see a crack on that. That crack was big enough to stick your whole hand in. That whole corner of the building was literally falling off. So that's been removed to become parking for the other part of that project. This is kind of an overview, an aerial, if you will, of the project. As I had mentioned, the canopy to the front of the gas station building is gone. The tanks are gone. The asphalt is gone. The curb cut off Cypress Street has--we plan to completely close. The two structures that have been removed are both showing on that site plan. This is the site plan as it has been designed at this point. It shows our ingress and egress entirely off the side streets. It provides for 25 parking spaces, which under the schedule in the code would accommodate 75 seats. We anticipate sharing this parking with the Milwaukee House proper, and if needed conversely, sharing that lot as well. In addition, although we can't count it, there's another roughly 20 spots of on-street parking that aside from the Boyer Agency having people moving in and out rapidly, there's very little use for the on-street parking at that end of downtown. This end of downtown is pretty sleepy. Obviously, if the ironworks were to redevelop, that could take off. Right now, it's pretty much literally a ghost town, that end of downtown, after dark. The sketch there does show a shaded area to the rear of the gas station. That's our anticipated addition. We plan to basically add on more space than we already have. It's more--it should be more than double the space that's there. To my understanding, the site plan right now as submitted, aside from our debate over the drive-through lane, this site plan is completely in conformance with the ordinance, to my understanding. Every other facet of this right now meets approval. The only thing that I did ask the engineers to check on, and I don't know if they've gotten too far yet, in the top right-hand corner is the dumpster location. And I would actually like to turn it around and put it essentially in what is the driveway of the two-car garage that's there and fence it there. I think it would be easier access for the trucks, and it would make the parking lot a little bit more attractive. Dumpsters aren't the most attractive thing. This is an exterior sketch of the addition, so to speak, the finished product. We do kind of like the kitschy little old gas station, mid-century modern sloped windows on the front, and anticipate keeping those there. I don't know if--most of you have been around here a while. I don't know if you've ever been inside that building. But the view out those windows, the panorama of what you can see and who can see you is--we're planning on putting a wraparound counter in the inside of those front windows and making that basically a little spike. You can throw a laptop on a counter. You can have a cup of coffee. You can hang out, you know, whatever you want to do. That's planned for that. The addition on the back end would be the same height inside as what was formerly the gas station, which I think is a 14-foot ceiling. This shows the floor plan. The area that's outlined in red is going to be the seating area, so to speak, for food service. You can see three yellow highlighted areas. In the center, to the north of that, would be the cook line, which is similar to an old-school short-order lunch counter kind of a setup. There would be a vent hood that runs from bottom to top. And at the top of that, you can see our proposed location for a drive-through window. The other space, the north, two-thirds of the addition, would be essentially kind of a retail area, mostly involving food products. We do have beer and wine takeout license. It would be operated much in the form of a pretty traditional deli. Again, we would probably sell other products, perhaps manufactured, not manufactured, produced by some local people. I've had some contact with people. I don't want to give away all my secrets, yes. I won't let everybody know what all those are. But I do anticipate selling a couple things there that I think people would go, "Oh, really? Yeah, I'll stop and get some of that." So, oops, wrong direction. The primary entrance to the building would be at the bottom of the screen. You can kind of see where there are--it's kind of flayed. That would be a kind of a trapezoidal area there for entrance as well. This, again, is the site plan. It does note in the front of the property, that area that's outlined in red. We anticipate the possibility. It's not an immediate project, but we anticipate everything that's in front of the building is going to become green space. There is not going to be any parking in front of the building. There's not going to be any traffic lanes in front of the building. That at some point is going to become perhaps outdoor dining or a green space or just an area that's just not asphalt. So that is left for that. A little chronology. It was 2015 when the Peninsula District ordinance was modified to provide for eating and drinking establishments and mixed uses. Those were previously a special use in the district. They're now an allowed use, which is a use by right. We bought the gas station property in 2018. Later that year, we purchased the property behind it and demolished that house. In June of 19, I met with Rob Carson regarding this project in general. Our discussion did include the drive-through use specifically. I've got some emails I can provide if anybody wants to see that. We were kind of kicking around some of my ideas. As I mentioned, there are still some balls in the air on this. I'm still--there are still a lot of variables, a lot of moving parts to what we're doing here. But I did meet with him, and we kind of went over what my plan was. And I asked him what would be involved there, and he had no objection. His comments to me were that he considered it to be a minor change. It was a Level 1 modification, including the addition. He didn't see any need to reinvent the wheel here, that he thought everything was going to be acceptable under the zoning as it was at the time, and it still--it hasn't changed since then. He had no objection to the drive-through accessory use at all. Later that year, I bought the 268 River Street property from the Boyer Agency and had that demolished. I did submit construction drawings, not a site plan, but my construction drawings, which do include the drive-through lane to Rob Carson in September of 2020. And he came back with several things that he noticed that were not yet in it, which were not really planned to be. It was a construction drawing at that point. It wasn't a site plan. It wasn't a formal site plan. It didn't have topographical elevations. It didn't have some of those things in it. So he sent me an email back outlining those emissions. I have that email as well if anybody needs to see it. At that point, I sent those things on to the Spicer Group with instruction to come back with a formal site plan. That was given to me in May of this year. I forwarded it on to Zach and got a rejection letter back, which was fairly surprising to me. I wasn't expecting to run into any obstacles that I wasn't already aware of at that point. That was two or three years into the planning of the project and having already kind of formulated our overall kind of project strategy and buying equipment and talking to people and making those kinds of preparations. The letter that I got back from him, in almost every way, mirrored the observations of Rob Carson as to what was missing in the site plan. Things like the neighboring properties, driveways weren't shown, a few things like that that were missing from the site plan that we needed to get corrected. There were two things in the letter that caught me off guard. One of them was a statement that the drive-through was absolutely not allowed in the Peninsula District, which was news to me. And I didn't pick that up in my reading of the ordinance. And Rob Carson apparently wasn't aware of it, nor was the city attorney, who had also been involved in the earlier conversation about the drive-through use of the property. And then, secondly, there was a comment in the rejection letter that we were exceeding the lot coverage requirements of the zoning ordinance. The Peninsula District only allows you to cover 60% of the lot. Zach's calculation was that we were covering 79. And I noted for him that the zoning ordinance very specifically says that lot coverage applies to buildings. It applies to structures. He was including the parking lot in the calculation, which was a misinterpretation. Sometime after that, he admitted that, yes, my interpretation was the correct one. In July this year, I had the site plan updated to incorporate all of the missing elements that Zach had noted in his letter, resubmitted it in October of this year, and then he came back in October, October 19, and rejected it yet again based on the drive-through. The underlying question in my mind here is exactly what does the ordinance say? What does it not say? What needs to be interpreted? What's ambiguous? What isn't? In my mind, and pretty much everybody I've had look at this, there isn't a lot of ambiguity here. It's pretty clear what the ordinance permits. In the Peninsula District, and I've had things given to me that were from other districts, but I'm not sure what their relevance is. In the Peninsula District, you have permitted uses, which are uses by right. They're allowed by the ordinance. And you have special uses, which require some negotiation either with the zoning administrator or with this body, as the case may be. In the left column there, you see the permitted uses, which include an eating and drinking establishment and a retail business. And what I'm proposing is essentially a little bit of a hybrid, but it's predominantly an eating and drinking establishment. And you'll see also up there at the top, accessory uses. If you have a permitted use, an accessory use to that permitted use is a use by right. We meet the definition of an eating and drinking establishment. They were granted permitted use designation by zoning amendment back in 2015. Those primary uses qualify the project as a permitted use by right in the Peninsula District. And it seems to me fairly clear by the letter of the zoning ordinance that accessory uses to any permitted use is itself a permitted use. The ordinance defines a use or principal use as the primary predominant or main use of a piece of property. And that is what the eating and drinking establishment is. It includes takeout. It includes onsite consumption. It includes coffee houses and bakeries and lunch counters and pretty much a very similar definition to what we're proposing to put there. The question to be answered is whether or not a drive-through establishment qualifies as an accessory use under the zoning ordinance. Is there any prohibition to that? And if it is permitted, what are the criteria for that? An accessory use by definition from the zoning ordinance says that a use that is incidental and subordinate to a primary use, principal use of the land, is an accessory use. Oops. It goes on further under accessory uses to give you two different tests. If you meet either test, you qualify as an accessory. Right in the middle of that screen, there's a great big red O. You don't have to meet both tests. You have to meet either one. If the activity is in conjunction with a principal use, and it's an incidental or insubstantial part of the total activity, it is an accessory use. Or if it is something that is commonly associated with the principal use in the view of most normal people. Not all restaurants have or even want drive-through lanes. You can't imagine having a sit-down dinner place that has a drive-through lane. Even subways don't have drive-through lanes. And there's a reason for that. It's because a lot of what they're preparing would take so long to get put together and out the window that the line would be nine miles long and everybody'd be waiting there for 45 minutes to get their stuff. Windows are a convenience for some items when you are selling something that can be put out the window in fairly rapid fashion. Some of what we're going to sell is going to qualify for that. We're going to be the only place in Manistee you can go buy a pasty. They're going to be prepared in advance. They're going to be there hot and ready to go. There are going to be other things of that nature, things that are more complicated you can't get at the window. If you want some of the other things sold inside the business, you can't get those at the window. Probably 95% of what we're going to sell is not going to be available through that window. It's going to be a fairly small, select assortment of things. We're going to be selling some barbecue. We're going to be selling some pasty. We're probably going to be doing some deep-fried chicken. We're going to be doing some things of that nature. But a lot of what we sell is going to be a deli sandwich that's handmade to your order. If you want a panini, you're going to have to come inside to get it. Some things are just not going to be available. To me, that qualifies this as an incidental, insubstantial use of that window compared to the total activity. There's going to be a lot of stuff sold in that building that you're not going to be able to get at that window. As far as the commonly associated test, you don't have to look too far to find other restaurants that have drive-throughs. There are lots of them. There are lots of businesses that aren't restaurants that have drive-throughs that also qualify as accessory uses. The second test there also applies regardless of whether the accessory use is separately identified in the ordinance in some other district as either a permitted or a special use, because it is an accessory use. If you're looking at a drive-through in a different district, and it's a primary use, that's different than being an accessory use in this There are interpretations in Part B of Section 516. One of them is that it cannot be--your plan cannot be dependent on the accessory use being available. If your project isn't going to make it, if you don't have that drive-through lane, it's dependent. And I've got some examples I'm going to show you that'll really kind of clarify what, in my mind, this means. The second part there saying that to be commonly associated doesn't mean that every restaurant has to have a drive-through. What it means is that there's a common acceptance of their relatedness, that some do, some don't. An accessory use is not to generate any effects on neighboring properties, traffic, noise. any effects on neighboring properties, traffic, noise. In my view, the ordinance itself lays out the rules for that. There's a section that deals specifically with drive-through use. There are sections in the ordinance that deal with the generation of noise and light and dust, and the site plan meets everything that's in the ordinance in those areas. I did want to point out that the ordinance itself uses a drive-through as an example of an accessory use. So to say that the ordinance doesn't allow a drive-through to be an accessory use when it actually uses one as an example, kind of mystifies me. If you see in 516-
Marty, are you referring to the car wash?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
If you look at Section 516 in the fourth section there, they actually note that a common accessory use can include an automated car wash associated with a gas station. That's a drive-through use. And you don't need to look much further than another section of the ordinance where the drive-through establishment vehicle stacking requirements are laid out, that they, again, there indicate that a car wash is a drive-through. So it's just connecting the dots. All I'm really asking tonight is that you read the ordinance the way that it's written, and if you follow what the ordinance is telling us as far as what is and is not allowable, it seems fairly obvious to me, and apparently to the city attorney as well, that drive-throughs can be accessory uses. And if your primary use is permitted in the district that you're in, an accessory use that meets these tests is allowed as a matter of right. Gasoline stations and car washes, how do they kind of inter-relate here? Here's an example from one right here in town. Now, these examples that I'm going to give to you are, I'm going to premise the overall discussion here on the assumption that wherever you're seeing this, that the primary land use we're going to assume is allowed in the district that it's in. We're talking about the accessory use. This one is right here in Manistee. What the ordinance essentially says is that if you have an allowed use in a district, that the accessory use is allowed under the umbrella of the primary use. It says that right, oops, going in the wrong direction. Right here. If an accessory use is commonly associated with the principal use, then the accessory use may be regarded as an accessory and may be carried on underneath the umbrella of the permit issued for the principal use. That's what the ordinance says. Back to examples. This one is a standalone car wash. There's no gas station there. This would not obviously qualify as an accessory use because there's no primary use there that meets zoning for it to fall under the umbrella of. This would require a special use permit in the city of Manistee by ordinance. This, however, this is not in Manistee, if that gas station were permitted by the zoning district it was in, the car wash is an accessory use. It's a drive-through. It's supplemental to the gas station. The ordinance itself uses car washes as an example of a drive-through accessory use. So that's an example of a primary use with an accessory use for a drive-through. This is something that is dependent on drive-through use. You can't go inside the Hotten now. There's no seating inside. There's no seating outside. Everything they sell comes through that window. 100% of their revenue is dependent on that window. This cannot be an accessory use because it is a primary use. They don't even have sufficient parking there for anything other than a drive-through. Here's one that is in town. It's still there. It's fairly new. I have not been in here to look, but I don't think Little Caesar's has any kind of a dining room. They have a counter. You can walk in and pick stuff up, but 99% of their business probably pulls up to that window on the side. Everything that they sell, everything that's on their menu can go out that window. It's the predominant source of their revenue. I don't think today, in 2021, that that would be approved in that spot unless it was a special use. It's a primary use, does not qualify as an accessory use. There are other ones around town, things that are not dependent. The business is viable without them. They're a customer convenience. The bank, much of what happens at the bank happens inside the lobby. If you want to open an account, if you want to move your money around in the certificate of deposit, you can't do that at the drive-through lane. You have to go inside. It's an accessory use. It's a customer convenience. It's not something that that bank relies on. It's a customer convenience. It's incidental to their primary use. There's one there as well. Drive-through at the pharmacy out at the family fair. Is that a primary use? Is that an accessory use? That clearly is an accessory use. Probably 99% of what's in the family fair isn't going out that window. There's another one right there. This is the last one I got for you. This obviously is a drive-through use. It's accessory in nature. If you want to mail something, you can go inside and stick it in the box. You can hand it to them over the counter. This is a customer convenience. The post office isn't going to fold if that goes away. It's there for customer convenience only. So that's basically what I have for you. I guess my comment is that this is, we've been kind of tied up. One comment I get all the time is, what are you doing with that gas station? Nothing's happening. I've been waiting for a year to get a site plan approved. I can't pull permits. I can't do much more than wash windows down there until I have permits, and I can't get permits until I have a site plan approved. So I'm here tonight essentially asking you to read the ordinance the way that it's written. City attorney has, I have, I've had other people read it as well. It's not ambiguous. It lays out what the test of the accessory use is, and I think we need it. So that's all I've really got. Thank you. If you have any questions, yes.
Yeah, if you could wait for some questions here.
Sure.
I'd like to start off, can you go back to Slide number six? That was the overall site plan?
Sure.
What is your proposed traffic flow for the drive-through?
We're going to be having the, all traffic is going to come in on River Street. It will then wrap, because obviously you have to have driver's side. And I did look at being able to reverse it and do it another way. It isn't real convenient. So essentially, the traffic will come in there, obviously the parking will go to the east. The drive-through window itself would be on the top of that, the top north facade of the building. It would then exit onto Mason Street. Our plan would be to put signage there that says, if you are southbound, go around the block. It had actually even occurred to me that it wouldn't be the world's worst idea, although I don't think that anybody, I never brought it up because I didn't think that probably the idea would fly, closing the end of Mason Street. But the other thing is I kept having in my head this thought that that was, that there was a blind coming across the bridge, that there was, it isn't. And you can go down in your car and sit yourself. For some reason, I had it in my mind, it was that were people that would be sitting there, wouldn't be able to see any, if they wanted to turn south and head back toward the south end of town, that there's limited visibility and there isn't. There's very good visibility all the way to the other side of the bridge. For people that are turning to the north, obviously there's no issue there at all. But we would be open to discussing signage that tells people that if they're southbound, they should go around the block. Or if there's another way to modify that site plan, even within the parking lot, to get people back onto River Street and to the light, we'd be open to that, too. We're not, this is not going to be a McDonald's. We're not going to have a million customers there. We're anticipating it's going to be probably seasonally busy and even time of the day busy. Don't know what else to tell you other than that.
Just one quick point of information for you. Little Caesar's has two or three little tables in there?
Do they?
Yeah.
I haven't been in there.
They do.
They do.
Seating for about eight.
Yeah, yeah, just as a point of information.
Okay, then they're allowed to live another day.
There you go.
So I don't think I have anything else for you. I do have copies of the correspondence I had with Rob. I think probably everybody here has seen the letter from the city attorney. That's all I got for you.
Marty, thank you very much. Questions?
You said that you received a rejection letter based upon the drive-through?
Yes.
Now, when did you submit the application before that rejection occurred?
That application was, I kind of gave it to you when I did the timeline.
May 24th is when you received the rejection. Just wondering when you made your first submission.
My, I sent Rob Carson the construction plans. It wasn't a formal site plan. He went over everything, looked at it. May 24th is when I got the rejection letter, and let me see if I can-
Did that also include other modifications required aside from the rejection of the drive-through?
The two conditions in the original rejection letter that weren't, I guess boilerplate stuff, were the lot coverage, which was a misinterpretation, and the drive-through, which in my mind is-
Well, just approximately, how long before you got your rejection, didn't you make your submission that was rejected?
It was fairly quick.
Okay, thank you.
And then we went back, and this is, I'm on my third site plan now, and they're not cheap, and I'd just like to start building.
So we're looking at May 24th. We've been working on this. When did you get the rejection?
Correct.
Yeah. So this is December, and now it's May.
Correct.
Okay.
I lost a summer.
Yeah.
I could have been-
Sure.
Right.
Thank you.
Anything further, John?
No, thank you.
Members of the board, we have other questions for Marty? We'll start, shall we?
Not for Marty, but I do for Zach.
Right.
I'm good.
Good. Okay. Zach?
Just since we're on that point with the rejection letters there, I think it should be known, there was discussion between Marty and I going for a text amendment to circumvent having to go to the ZBA, and that also slowed things down, too. So there was a pause there because of that.
What do you mean? I don't understand what you just said.
So when there was a denial, there was numerous options given to him outside of just coming to the ZBA. There was a walk-up window offered, and then there was also the option of a text amendment.
Was it May 24th or after May 24th?
I'm not sure of the exact day, but it would have been after, I would assume.
So the principal rejection occurred on May 24th, and from then, the process is moving forward has been completely stalled. Is that correct? Have you kind of done a little
There's been, there was been-
Back and forth.
Numerous applications that have come back and-
But Zach, you were also going to go on to explain some of the other options. Maybe you should hit on the text amendment.
Yes.
What else is, what other options, whatever avenues there are.
Yeah, so one option that was offered up was the idea of a walk-up window to kind of encourage walkability along the River Street and the River Walk. Marty denied that one, and as is his right. The other option would be a text amendment to go through that process to allow for a drive-through to be a permitted use, a use, we suggested a special use because that's what it is in every other district within the city, to kind of go with that flow. And that option was, I think it's fair to say, toyed with for a while before it came back for the ZBA.
And for everybody's edification and knowledge, new people, old people, what's the process for a text amendment, to acquire a text amendment, to go through that, jump through that hoop?
Yeah, so for a text amendment, one would have to come up with the language, which in this case is very simple, to make this already defined use allowable, as we suggested a special use. There's a $1,000 permit fee. There's a public hearing involved with a notice that goes through the planning commission and then goes to city council before it is fully through the system there.
That's probably what, about a three-month procedure?
Depending on when, you know, I get the okay and I start my noticing, I need a 15-day notice before a meeting. I try and give the paper as much lead time as I can on top of that. That also gives me time to work through it and write it and create the documents. Then it goes typically, hopefully I can get it on the next city council meeting, and that goes through two readings. So I wouldn't be unheard of for three months, but two.
Okay.
Zach, if you'd like to go ahead then, with your information.
Yeah, so, you know, I'm not, I don't think it's right for me to go through and argue each of Marty's points there. I laid out my views in the letter that I had, and they still stand. What I did want to say was, I just really wanted to, again, reiterate kind of, Glenn, what you were saying in the beginning of the meeting, that this is not a site-specific, say that five times fast, scenario you guys are deciding on tonight. This applies to the whole city. So Marty said at the end here, you know, if this isn't a McDonald's. Well, if you were to get, guys were to go with the interpretation that Marty has, and if McDonald's wanted to go there, I would, it would be allowable, and it would be no special use, no, you know, very streamlined, it'd be very quick. So-
Within the Peninsula District?
Within any district.
C district.
Any district where a eater, you would be allowed. Shelley, did you have?
I do. I know you laid out your specific points in the letter, so, but I would like to hear, in your words, the differences in interpretation from George Saylor and the retained attorney, and your interpretation.
Yeah, so, you know, Marty's got the language right up here, so I think I'll just, if I can find it.
Because admittedly, I'm struggling a little bit, aside from, you know, my preference for traffic flow in a parking lot notwithstanding, I'm struggling to see why this doesn't qualify for an accessory use when we do see them all over town.
So I think, I think what the city attorney and Mr. Spalding here really leaning on is where it says, uses may be considered accessory to the principal use regardless of whether the accessory use is separately identified in this ordinance as a permitted or special use. There's no- There's no denying that. My issue is that it doesn't say, it's language that's muddy. This is our issue right there. If that sentence isn't there, this is a basic planning knowledge that you go highest and best use. Special use is always at the top, overlay districts, things like that. But it doesn't specify district. So that's my interpretation. The intent, to me, the intent of the ordinance is, yes, if it's separately identified as a permitted or special use in that district, then yes. But because it's explicitly not, zoning is not permissive, therefore, it is not allowed.
Does that clear it up, Shelley?
It clears it up. I'm curious if...
Doesn't for me. Totally confused.
If there are other examples...
I mean...
Has the lang, has this always been the language?
Yes. As far as I know, the 2017 adoption or most recent adoption, which isn't even necessarily true, that was another point I wanted to touch on, but I can wait on that because that might just add more that you don't need to hear right now.
So I go back to struggling with primary use versus accessory use for most of the businesses that I'm thinking about that have a, now, maybe I read something wrong. You can't move forward on a site plan without this specific special use permit.
I'm not seeking a special use permit.
Not accessory, sorry. Not thinking of special use. You're saying, because you said at the beginning, and I thought that I read somewhere where you said your project is dead in the water without this drive-through.
That was essentially a statement of frustration. That I had been through discussions with Rob and I pretty specifically laid out in an email, I can show it to you, that, you know, that I want to make sure you understand that I, you know, that part of this is a drive-through. And he was, yeah, I'm well aware of that. And I said, I just want to make sure. And he said, no, it's... To just kind of be hit with this as a reason for a rejection when I was expecting it to be acceptable. That and, to be honest, the combination of the rejection of the drive-through lane and then the, the comment about the lot coverage being out of formula. When I got those two things, I just kind of set the whole thing aside for a little bit and was just kind of like, threw my hands up and it's like, that's not what I was told before. And actually, to your statement about how long there was between plan submission and things happening, there was a period there of several weeks, maybe a month, where after I got the first rejection letter, I just set the whole thing aside. And that's when we had some discussion about text amendment changes and things of that nature. And that's when I, it kept bothering me that something just didn't seem right, especially with the lot coverage. And that's when I went back and pulled his rejection letter and actually sat down with the ordinance and went through point by point. I said, no, you know, on the lot coverage, he's wrong. And on the drive-through, he's wrong. I mean, it's just, that's not what the ordinance says. The ordinance is there. You know, and we can want and wish and plan for it to be written some other way, but I think the ordinance is supposed to be followed, interpreted where it's ambiguous. This isn't real ambiguous. This is pretty black and white to me.
Marty, as I understand what you've been saying here in your discussions with Rob Carson, you had feelings of expectation of acceptance.
I thought we didn't have any outstanding issues, other than clerical things and, you know, topographical elevations and things that had to be fleshed out. Conceptually, we were right on. I mean, he was in walking around the building and I kind of pointed and we're going to this area and he's like, yeah. He's like, you know, great idea. Like Manistee needs a success story, you know, get on with it. It's just...
I'm still confused about this. Well, it's not on the screen any longer.
Oh, I, yeah.
Highlighted section there. I'd like to read that aloud. Uses may be considered accessory, and the definition of accessory, here's from the dictionary, a thing which can be added to something else in order to make it more useful, versatile, or attractive. Uses may be considered accessory to the principal use regardless of whether the accessory use is separately identified in this ordinance as a permitted or special use. I don't get it.
And that's part of the problem is, is the language is poor. I don't think there's any denying that.
Don't we have to go with the language that's there, whether you like it or not? Or whether or not any of us like it or not?
Perhaps some of the confusion comes in, and please correct me if I'm wrong here, but when I've read all this, the discussion over approving this as an accessory use is being denied because the Peninsula District plan does not mention drive-throughs.
Correct.
And it says right here, it does not have to. That's what that says.
Regardless of whether. So I'm curious if that's an oversight.
It doesn't, it's not our job, that's part of my question because in C1, 2, and 3, it is mentioned, but it does not in...
Is it a different author?
There's been many authors.
If I might make a point.
It's kind of a special district, though. There's no other district in the city anywhere that is what the Peninsula District is. And when you talk about making an exception and it would allow somebody to put a McDonald's at River Maple and get a drive-through, I, you have to preserve what River Street is.
If I might make a comment, the other mentions of drive-throughs in the zoning ordinance are entirely as primary uses.
They're special uses.
Primary special uses, primary permitted uses.
So in the other commercial districts, is it listed under...
I'd be happy to read the definition of drive-through, if that would help everyone.
Yes.
Please.
Okay. It says, drive-through establishment or facility, an establishment that by design, physical facilities, services, or packaging procedures encourages or permits some or all customers to receive services, obtain goods, or be entertained while remaining in their vehicles.
Some or all services.
Some or all.
Some or all. So are there any other, can you give me the boundaries for the Peninsula District?
It would be the east side, east of 31 on River, down one block. Probably pull it up if that's, let's do that.
Okay, Miller's Produce is the southern line of it. Longer than that is the Peninsula, all the way to Cypress.
So I understand that the only uses within the Peninsula District are those which are specified? Is that what you're trying to say?
Correct. Zoning is not permissive.
Where does it say that in any ordinance that is written for the city?
That's a, that's a principle of zoning, of planning and zoning.
Is that written?
In...
We need to have something in writing so that we can make a determination, as you said in the very beginning and as you reiterated before you began your talk.
I'm sure I can, I can find it in there.
Thank you very much. Please do.
Yeah.
Okay. So it's a, it's a pretty large area then, if it goes up to...
I got it right here.
Goes up to Wesco Station, just on the other side of the street.
Okay.
Webster.
I mean, I'm just looking for some help here if we're going to go along with you or no. And it's got to be in writing. And if you can't find it in writing, this stuff is in writing. Everything that we've seen so far is in writing.
So let me, let me, okay. So back to my original question. So your, if I'm hearing you correctly, your principal issue with the attorney's interpretation then is in missing language, what he just said? If it's not specified and you're saying it has to be specified in zoning?
That's, yes. If it's not a clear yes, then it's, then it's a no.
That's what you're going to find in...
I'll get you the exact language here. It's in there. I honestly, I probably should have found that. I didn't realize that was an issue, so.
Well, it has to be an issue. How could it not be?
Because that's a, that's a common principle of planning, so I, it's my fault for...
There's an assumption that he makes that other people don't.
I can't be, I've got to go by what...
I understand. I'll point out that the Peninsula District is in blue. That question was right there.
I'm just trying to, I'm trying to think of, are there, I know we're only speaking of the Peninsula District, but you made the comment that the decision that's made here affects the entire city.
Correct.
And so why wouldn't, why wouldn't the converse be true? So all the other decisions where there are accessory use drive-throughs, why wouldn't that apply then to the Peninsula District?
You're saying where there are ones already in the city? There are many, many grandfathered uses in the city.
Grandfathered.
Do you want to read that to me?
Zach, if you're looking in Article 6 on the Peninsula District, if you look under 601 subsection B, accessory use to uses permitted by right.
For Zach Dennis?
In, under Peninsula District, Section 601, and it's subsection B.
Six, which is the...
Is there, is there a question on that?
No, I was making the point that accessory use is, to a principal, is a permitted use.
Yeah, correct. I'm not denying that.
Am I right?
Am I right.
Correct. My issue is that it's not an accessory use there in that district.
But it appears that it... But why is it not an accessory use just because it happens to be in that district?
Because it's omitted?
It's expressed in the, it's expressed by definition elsewhere.
Where?
C1, C2, and C3 allow for drive-through establishments as special uses. Special uses.
At particular...
But in this case, there you're...
Well, and the city attorney agreed with that idea, disagreed with that idea, excuse me.
Correct.
Yes. So do I. Makes no sense. It's an accessory use and we should approve the use that this man is looking for tonight without any further delay.
That will have to hold until we go to the business section. We're still actually in public comment.
All right. Thank you.
Right.
I mean, I understand what you're trying to do. You're trying to protect the community from any future development that would be unwanted and that's a wonderful thing to be doing. I support that 100%. I was one of the initial members of the Downtown Development Authority who got the historic district put in. And Dwayne and I, when he was in high school, was cutting weeds and trees on the side of the river before we even put the River Walk in. So, I mean, you know, we've got to go by the rule of law here and what's natural.
I'm stuck on...
So anyway.
This is...
Shelley, go ahead.
I'm, on other commissions that I sit on and we just recently had this. We were advised not to clarify in ordinance, to leave it broad because specificity might bring litigation.
May I ask who said that? And this is the dance that you're always playing. How about that? This is the dance you're always playing. There's times when you need to be specific and there's times where it might be appropriate to be more broad. But this is, you know, as a planner, this, this language is muddy and, you know, typically in planning, it's a common knowledge, highest and best use. That's, that's the same in assessing, that's the same in everything. So when you have something that contradicts that...
How is this not highest and best use?
Highest and best use is the primary use of the property, isn't it?
Highest and best use, so the use being special, being the special use and the special use in the rest of the city is a drive-through establishment. And those are in C1, C2, and C3.
See that.
And if it's not in the Peninsula District only by omission, it's not specifically prohibited per se?
It's prohibited because it's not listed.
By omission.
Correct.
But I...
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Spalding, please.
I mean, if you look at the chart where everything is, and I don't know who reviews these.
Again, the designation of drive-throughs in the other districts is as a primary use.
It's a special use.
Primary special use. There's a primary allowed use.
But yours would be accessory.
This is accessory. That's apples and oranges, not relevant.
Is that where that's listed? I'd like to, I'd like to look at that right now.
I'm sorry, can you say that again?
What, where is that listed in the ordinance? Just because I'd like to see it in writing right now.
See, to see what? I'm sorry.
As an example, see one where it says...
You want to see other examples?
You can't do it.
I could, I could show you an example of a different district, yeah. Just a second.
So who, who would be responsible for changing the language in the ordinance?
It comes down to the Planning Commission after a public hearing.
Okay.
And like we discussed, the language is not good.
So you'll see here, this is the C1 district.
Oh, good. Thank you.
Is that what you're looking for, Zach?
Yes. Perfect. Thank you.
Drive-through establishment.
As amended March 2nd, 2018.
And so what is the distinction then between permitted uses and special uses?
Special uses require a public hearing. There's a 300-foot mailing around the property in question. The public is allowed to speak at the public hearing. The requirements, excuse me, of the site planner are a little more stringent, things like that.
So within those districts, does each person, each property have to go through a special use in order to allow a drive-through?
In the C1, yes.
So even though it's listed here, they still have to...
Yeah, it's under special use. So they would have to go through that process of spending the money and getting the...
Correct.
Now I understand.
Thank you.
Unless we have further discussion, I would move that we close the public hearing portion.
Can I make one more comment? So I just, again, I want to reiterate, as Glenn mentioned before, that this is not site-specific. I'm in no, no way trying to say no to Marty specifically. This is, this is a broad thing that affects the whole city. So I just want to reiterate that, you know, this is not just this site that we're thinking of. But yeah, other than that, you're free to close the public hearing and mention the time. Don't forget that.
Does the board have any other questions that need to talk to Marty and Zach about? All right. I move that we close the public hearing portion, move into the business session. I move that we close the public hearing portion, move into the business session. Uh, let's see. A question, Zach. I think you had originally planned to use the questions that ordinarily used in the variance to write this.
That, we, we discussed trying to, trying to modify those and ultimately decided to stick to those three points in the zoning ordinance that you kind, you outlined most of that in, in your, in your opening dialogue there. So, I would ask that, you know, no matter what your guys' decision is, please state your reasoning. It's, that's very important for documentation's sake, so.
And looking at the basic conditions here in the questions, which are the ones that we're supposed to use for this particular?
One through three.
There, there's one through three in the, in the zoning ordinance under the, I think it's in the memo I provided to you guys near the end. Yep. So, in that, in that last section there, under section 2507.
Looking at question four, which states the requested variance is not of a recurrent nature, to require a change in the zoning ordinance, is that also something we should look at?
Because this isn't a variance, this is an interpretation, it kind of is a little contradictory to, to, to phrase it like that. Yeah, I guess, you know, and like I said, it's the interpretation, so, you know, it comes down, if, if you would like, I could, I could read that. I don't know if that'd be appropriate or not. I don't know if you guys have it in front of you.
At some point, we know that the ordinance is gonna have to be visited, but maybe that's not for tonight's discussion.
Change those to interpretation?
Between the board members, do we have further discussion of this? Any other information that we require?
Not information. Are you saying that we, the way to phrase that question would be to...
We should change that.
Change that to interpretation?
As Dwayne pointed out here, if we're gonna use these three questions, we need to make a slight modification to them.
The, the, may I? So, Glenn, the, the three, I guess, quote, quote unquote, questions are the, the three bulleted points under the zoning ordinance, 2507. Is that what you're referring? I just wanna make sure, 'cause they're not, they're kind of questions, but they're not. So, I just wanted to make sure we're talking about the same thing.
They require a double negative.
Right, right.
I hate double negatives. Okay, so if we were to word it as the requested interpretation, would that be an acceptable word to use?
I believe it would be.
That's what I think.
Acceptable with that?
I, I missed that. So, we've got this, we use this form when we're making definitions.
Okay.
Normally on variances, this is a whole different bucket of worms. But we use this, this list of questions.
And, and I didn't provide those questions, John, so I don't think that's in your packet.
Oh, he's got them.
Oh, we do? Okay. You do have them, okay.
It's on the back of that letter.
Yeah.
The city letter.
Oh.
Or the county letter, maybe. County.
Okay. All right, yeah, maybe it's there. I'm sorry.
So, all he's saying is that the way these are worded are kinda, kinda goofy anyway, but this is, this is set up for variance, and so we're saying that we're gonna replace the word variance.
Oh, yeah.
And put in interpretation, 'cause we're looking to interpret this.
Right.
This ordinance.
So, thank you, Dwayne. So, by using these questions, then, we will be asking, I think, what are appropriate questions. As you well know, and I've complained about it many times, understanding...
Yes.
...the question, so we know which way we need to go. I, I wanna make sure that we're all clear, 'cause these questions are very difficult. The first one, I believe that we are discussing here, is the requested interpretation is not contrary to the public interest or to the intent or purpose of this ordinance. Zach, help me out here on these, because, again, if we say that this requested interpretation is not contrary, and we say yes, that, in essence, is agreeing with Marty's interpretation. Am I correct?
You're really making me bake my noodle on this one.
We could just throw these questions out and say, okay, do we want it, or don't we?
Well, I, I think you could base your discussion on those questions would be, might, might be appropriate. You don't have to explicitly say, this is the question, but you say, in your discussion, explain it, so that way we can avoid the, the double negatives and the confusion. I think that might be appropriate.
But would then be appropriate and/or legal for us to, after a discussion based upon these three questions, to have an up or down vote?
So, can, can you read the next question for me? 'Cause I think we might be talking about different...
Okay. Well, the next one I have here is, a requested interpretation does not establish a use that is not permitted by right or by a special use permit in the zoning district.
And that, that was in the packet that I provided.
So, does that need to be placed by case?
Oh, I see. You're, on the application? On the application itself?
On the application questions.
Okay. Yes. That's what I, that's what I thought. Okay. Yeah. I'm sorry about the confusion there. I was really scrambling.
That's all right.
Those are, like, yeah, those are for variance. Those are specific for a variance request. Those are, were those ones we would like reasoning for each of those on a variance. An interpretation, we just ask to have your reasoning. It doesn't have to be based on these questions. I think these questions might be helpful if they're reworded, but it's not a necess, you know, it's not a demand that's necessary.
That's why we were saying we would replace the word variance with the word interpretation, see how that worked, and steering us down the right.
So, in, in number two, if you were to say, does not establish a use that is not permitted... There is no, nothing in the ordinance that I've seen so far that says that a drive-through is not permitted.
Correct.
Has anyone else seen it?
It is not specifically prohibited.
Right. Not specifically prohibited.
That's good.
Not specific, so you'd have to say, uh... No, on that one. It's not specifically prohibited.
Where are these questions? We're both having...
It's, it's on, they're on the application that Marty filled out.
Yeah, the application.
You put the application in the...
Forgive me, Marty. We're working off of what ordinarily is our paperwork for a variance, which is what usually comes for the ZBA, but we're...
Some of those thoughts of this district.
So, as you know, it's here.
And since we generally only deal with double negatives about twice a year, you gotta get your mind wrapped around it.
Gentlemen? And he's not seeking a variance, but we're using this as a guideline?
Yeah, using this as a template. We're taking, changing the word variance to interpretation.
Meted by right of special use, is that what they say?
Any one of these?
This has to be permitted. Which applies to it? Or considered a special use, which has a different...
Anybody's answer, contrary.
It does.
I think we just ruled what we said, if he wants to file another procedure.
Okay, just had a sidebar. Excuse me.
Trying to get our brains together.
Right, trying to wrap around here. And, well, talk to Dennis about it. He's got more experience.
May I? Can I ask?
Yeah, go, Shelley.
So, that's probably for Zach. So, you said there are numerous grandfathered examples of accessory use around town for a drive-through.
Yeah.
What, what's the process for grandfathering?
They, they have to be existing before the zoning ordinance.
They were legal until the time they were built.
So, the, the current business had to exist before, that's how it, so whatever business is being operated?
The, the use.
Okay.
We had it on a house, a grandfathered-in apartment, and whoever bought the house was buying that grandfathered-in apartment. They grandfathered in unless you knocked it down.
So, there, in the existing building, there isn't a drive-through window?
I can read...
There's a drive-through car wash in, on the existing building.
Well, that's been abandoned for so long, it is not grandfathered in.
So, in section 405 abandonment, any building structure or land that has been used for non-conforming purposes but which has not been occupied by such non-conforming use for one year or more shall not be thereafter be used unless it conforms with the provisions of the ordinance.
Okay.
Right.
I, I ask because she references it.
She?
Well, George references it under this headline.
What I'd like to propose here is we use these three questions as discussion points between us, and then Zach or Marty, if you'll, please stay available in case we have an additional question for you. Looking at the first one, let's start there. The requested interpretation is not contrary to the public interest or to the intent and purpose of this ordinance. What do you think?
Which interpretation? The city's or the...
Our's. Our interpretation.
Okay.
Well, yeah, our requested interpretation, what they're requesting us to interpret, would not end up resulting in being contrary to the public interest or to the intent or purpose.
I, I think it is not.
It is not contrary.
Not contrary.
It's not contrary.
Now, is it, but is it contrary to the ordinance itself, which doesn't necessarily specifically prohibit...
Right.
...the accessory use? It, it doesn't...
I think Zach's interpretation is that it does explicitly prohibit it.
I think that's exactly what it does say. Anything that's not listed here is not allowed unless you do the, the special use.
So, it is prohibited by omission, then, is what we're saying.
And when you make those kind of statements, yes, I was a tax auditor for years, when you make those kind of statements, just like what's made there, if it ain't here, it has to go this way. And that says has to become a special use and go through whatever process.
For that, for the Peninsula Project, they say any accessory use is permitted by right.
So, Eric says if we don't permit it by right, if it's not on this list...
Well, eating establishment, which he's proposing, is a permitted use. And this would be an accessory to a permitted use.
Right.
I'd, I'd like to, to read an excerpt here.
What was that? Zach, what was it?
I said, I, I'd like to read an excerpt here, section 400, Purpose and Intent, under Nonconformities. It says, "It is further the intent of this ordinance that such nonconformities shall not be enlarged, expanded, or extended except as provided herein, or shall such nonconformities be used as grounds for adding other buildings and structures and uses of parcels, lots, buildings, and structures prohibited elsewhere in the same land use district." So, I, that, that doesn't exactly, that's not the exact language you're looking for, but it is, it does go along with that. So, if you give me just another minute here.
Punch it up for us also, read, Zach.
I'm sorry?
Can you also punch that up so we can read that?
Yes, I will get that back up here in just a second.
Of the word prohibited is probably interpretive, too. This is one of those things that's just gonna make me angry as a property owner.
And then it says, use is permitted by right.
Because...
That's permitted by right.
This seems like a no-brainer, because somebody left something off.
Consider the contrary.
We're not having a problem.
Argue, argue, arguably.
So...
But this, by this, because they're not on here...
Because of the ambiguity.
Because it's an accessory use.
We, we have, we have to interpret a bad ordinance.
Other C districts, the drive-throughs were a specific item, and, and the other commercial districts.
Well, change it. We have to interpret it.
So, that's why they had to request a special use?
Glenn?
Because I know the personal districts, eating establishments were...
If we can keep, keep the, the discussion centralized, just for Nancy's sake.
Oh, sorry, Nancy. We're...
Sorry. I, I understand, and it's easier, but we're trying, we have to keep the minutes.
Okay. So, I wanna go back to something here, and like I said in my open, we have to support the ordinances that we are given. We cannot just go in and change things willy-nilly, even if we dearly want the restaurant and everything there. So, we have to act in a judicial fashion here and support the written laws as we interpret them. And the question is, how do you interpret something which wasn't included? And that gets down to a judgment. I'm not sure...
You have to use the language that's available to you.
So, the fear here is that i- if you include uses that aren't allowed in certain districts but are in others, at the end of the day, why have zoning?
These rules for a reason. Yeah, I get that.
The second one, the requested interpretation does not establish a use that is not permitted by right or by a special use permit in the zoning district.
Right.
It should not be permitted use, so that's a, that's all that's a use, that one?
Yeah. And the last one is, the requested interpretation does not create an adverse effect upon properties in the immediate vicinity, vicinity or in the district.
I think that's true.
They're probably not preferred by all of the properties that we're in.
Yeah, I don't think it creates any...
Well, Marty owns.
Yeah, he already owns a lot, so.
And your residence is 300 feet in one direction, over 1,000 in most others.
Correct.
That would take in business, auto value would have, get to voice their opinion or whatever, but nevertheless, I, you know, I don't, I don't think that is an issue.
Right across the street from the little...
So, what was your answer for number two?
Oh, you're asking, oh, number two is just the requested interpretation does not establish a use that is not permitted by right or by a special use permitted in this only district.
Who do you think the answer is?
I'm getting rid of knots, give me a second.
I haven't seen anything yet that says it's not permitted.
In the Peninsula District, accessory uses related to uses permitted, say, use by right and special land use, that is included on here.
It's one of those two terms.
But then...
But that specific specialty, but that specific specialty use is not included in the Peninsula District. Nor is it prohibited.
Well, right. What we have is a little bit of contradictory language, or do we not? Because drive-through...
Which is not prohibited.
Drive-through doesn't say it is...
It has to be special use because it is so indicated in the other commercial districts.
Well, I'm, I'm asking...
What's that?
I'm asking for a little bit of clarification for planning, because every single district across the board says by right, there's a use by right and a special land use, all of them, including the Peninsula District. You flip the page, in specific, so that's for accessory uses, then it says specifically drive-through establishment, only C1, 2, and 3 are mentioned. So, to me, that, they contradict each other. If, if accessory uses are permitted across the board, and then... If, if accessory uses are permitted across the board, and then an obvious accessory use is omitted on the second page, how do we square that?
Well, and that's, that's the problem there, that, that's where the, the intent of the ordinance comes into play.
The, well, the intent of the ordinance, okay, so if the intent of the ordinance says that an accessory use is secondary to the primary use of the building, which clearly is an eatery.
So, so, the, from.
My comment would just be that, again, to repeat, that again,
the indication that drive-through uses are in C one, two, and three are as primary uses.
Where that drive-through use, that hot now, is allowed as a special use in C one, two, three.
It's not allowed in Peninsula as a primary use.
And, and here comes, here in lights the problem, because the definition of a drive-through says some or all.
Correct.
And, and hence the contradiction, and hence why we're here.
So in other words, any of those, um, restaurants along thirty-one or elsewhere that have a drive-through have had to go through a special use permit, is that what you're saying?
Theoretically, yes, they could be grandfathered uses though.
Okay. To bring this to conclusion, I, I hate long meetings. I'm open to some suggestions here, if you want to use the three questions as the basis, and then the majority, uh, rules. I'm not quite sure what the feeling of the board is. Personally, I would like to have an up or down vote, realizing our purpose and our authority as the zoning Board of Appeals.
Do we have the ability to do majority rules, or does it have to be unanimous?
I'm sure Zach.
It would be, it would be majority. And, and I would ask that you please provide your reasoning for, for whatever your vote is, just for record's sake.
If we do take an up or down vote.
Correct.
The majority would rule.
Correct.
John, are you comfortable with it?
I'm good with it.
Yep, I'm good with up or down.
Okay. And here, just a point of legality, uh, Zach, if we do this, is this going to be legal in terms of what we are supposed to do from your view as the zoning Board of Appeals?
Yes, like I keep saying, please provide your reasoning.
Right.
And, and it would carry, yes.
Right. Okay, well, I will entertain a motion regarding Marty's, uh, proposed accessory use issue.
Is it the interpretation of the ordinance shall include as a primary, uh, sec, uh, accessory use as noted by the applicant, that it is not a primary use, that the interpretation is to his favor.
Nancy, would you read that back to us, please? I had to do that too.
I don't type that best.
Let me try to say it again, let me try to say it again.
All right, say it one more. I'm, I'm just using emoji.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because I will review it.
Okay, motion?
I will review it word by word when I get it into my office.
I make a motion to approve the requested interpretation of, of Mr. Spaulding, that the accessory use as, uh, indicated as a permitted by right in the Peninsula District, that his accessory use comes under the definition. Clear it up, it's still muddy.
Comments, Zach?
Um, I just, Dennis is an alternate member. So if somebody echoes that, that, that would be fine. So.
We'll need someone else to make the motion, because technically I'm the alternate.
Is anyone else an alternate member?
No, I'm the alternate.
I'll make a motion to.
You, you, I guess technically he's not.
Just echo.
You can echo that.
Echo that.
So, we have a motion on the floor, presented by alternate, but echoed by Shelley Mamberto, to approve.
To approve the Spaulding accessory use of, as indicated by the right in the Peninsula, as it comes under the definition, something like that. He's pretty close to that.
Okay, any comments before we move on to a vote?
I need a second.
We have a second. Don't need a second?
Did, I've got Shelley as a, a motion.
Yeah.
She echoed the motion, but.
Does that, that doesn't count as a second, does it?
Correct, we would need a second.
Do we have a second? Oh, I'll second it. John, uh, second's that? All right, Nancy, if you would be so kind as to call the roll.
Okay. Dennis Johnson.
Yes.
Dwayne Jones.
No.
Linda Siler.
No.
Shelley Mamberto.
Yes.
Glenn Zerring.
Yes.
John Veach.
Yes.
You want our reasons, right?
Please.
Do we go in order, or?
It, how, however you, you'd like it, that'd be great.
What was that, Shelley, I didn't hear you?
I asked, he, I was confirming that he wanted the reasons for our vote.
Right.
And asked, we go in order of the way we voted, or?
Right. Okay, let's go in order of what we voted. State, state for Nancy, okay?
Slowly, I am not going to ask Dennis, as he cannot vote. Okay, Dwayne.
Um, my only feeling is, and believe me, I would, I would love to see this business take off and do great, because I'm absolutely pro-business. Uh, as, as Glenn pointed out, right out of the blocks, our, our duty is to interpret as best we can the ordinance, as flawed as it may be. In the way it sits, I don't believe that it allows us to, to prove it or to, to, um, interpret it in favor, only because of the omission of, of the allowable special use. If that makes sense.
Does.
Linda.
I, I just, with what I said, I believe the ordinance states that if it's not listed here, it has to be included over on that side, which is the special use. To me, that's how I interpret the ruling.
Shelley.
I don't like this. Let me, let me start by saying that. So, I read a lot of laws, I look at a lot of laws, I look at a lot of interpretations, and this is one of those that's very frustrating, because the ordinance itself is ambiguous in nature and omits language that may be necessary to interpret some of these applications that come forward. Provides a table on, that begins on page seven, um, where, as I stated, the table of land uses says that accessory uses related to uses permitted. We've already established that the use of the business that's coming forward is permitted, correct? So, here, it says across the board, in every district, that accessory uses related to uses permitted are allowed, albeit some additional hoops to jump through. But then, on the next page, there is omission. Without notes from the meeting or delving into the mind of the person who wrote that portion of it, I can't interpret if, if it was intentionally left out, because we don't have the record, at least not in front of us, of how this portion of the table was created. I don't know if it was left out intentionally. Most of that use, even in twenty eighteen, most of that Peninsula District is residential and some limited factory-like places, with, with a few exceptions. I don't believe there are any other restaurants. Am I correct?
Restaurant in the, uh.
Happy nineteen oh four.
That's true.
Fireworks.
Nineteen oh seven, yeah.
Which doesn't have a drive-through or a walk-up.
No, no.
So.
Yes, and a lawyer across the street.
My interpretation, uh, aside from the fact that I'm entirely annoyed that this gentleman who's invested in the community, and that's a, that's a, that's a side thing, who, because, again, I'm pro-business too, I want anybody who's willing to invest particularly in such a prominent location, I am sensitive to if his venture doesn't pan out, this change allows for something that possibly wouldn't be welcome there. But, I think it is left to interpretation. This part of it is written incorrectly, and it probably needs to go back in front of those who are responsible for either the omission or the language as it was written. And I, I hate to hold him responsible, three, four years dragging this out, because we need, as collective bodies, to, to look at this type of language. Again, I don't like it. It, part of me says rules are rules, and black and white is black and white, but this isn't black and white. In one place, it appears to say that it's okay, and in another place, it says, well, maybe not. And the, the ordinance itself, the language is ambiguous. I hope that explains it.
Get all that, Nancy?
Well.
She knows where to find it.
Here, for this.
I've written many of her things. Glenn?
You just did it all for me.
And I hope to see this in front of the planning commission.
Yeah. This particular issue has caused me several sleepless nights. Probably not as many as yours. Because I find myself in the position of having to defend things which are poorly written, to the point that interpreting them is a real mess. And when I look at this, the omission from the Peninsula District plan without any specificity bothers me. I think the plan was poorly written, that they did not adequately spell out some of the things which we have to uphold. With Linda in that we try to work by the letter of the law, right now, we can't find the exact letter of the law. When I add to that, the fact that Mr. Spaulding worked with Ron Carson, our previous, uh, planning director, a gentleman I respect immensely, and evidently did not have any of these issues brought up that would delay the project. I feel for him as a developer, trying to move forward with something he thinks he's got approval from. At the same time, working with Zach, which I have done a lot here this time of year, I really respect you.
Absolutely.
You know, for what you find and how you get things pulled together. But when it gets down to saying yes or no, I have to say yes, because Carson said yes, because the zoning ordinances we're trying to follow don't really say yes, but don't really say no. So the ambiguity of these documents, and we have many of them, we've discussed a lot of them, not just this particular one, not this particular issue. Have to start over, because it is not, I think, fair to ask this board to make interpretations of things which have not been properly defined.
I don't think it's fair to the planning department to tell people, no, I'm a technicality either.
Yeah. But I, you know, as a chair, I vote yes, I accept that. Oh, that's all. Sorry. I was praying.
John?
Well, I think everybody's cleared the issues pretty well, and, uh, I think Zach's trying to do the best he can to represent the, uh, the city, and, um, I don't think it's his responsibility that it's, uh, the mess that he is, and that it's dragged down so long for you, and it certainly isn't your responsibility. I think we have to say yes, and then we have to refer this to the city for urgent attention to specifically address this issue. And personally, when I, when I read the ordinances, it does, it doesn't disallow it, so why not allow it? And it says that in the ordinance. So, that's all I've got, thank you.
Are you good, Nancy? You're good? Okay, I think we're ready to move on to setting the twenty twenty-two agenda. I'm sorry, meeting date, not agenda.
Yep. Okay, we need to set our organizational meeting date, uh, are we still looking in January?
Yeah, I think January, February, if, if need be, but, you know, not, Nancy has prohibited March. Doesn't work for her.
I would be gone half the month.
Man, and I would say the same thing about February, I'm hoping not to be here, so.
Maybe we say January then.
January, if we can do it.
John, is January sometime gonna work for you? Linda? Yep, okay, and we pick a.
So I know there, um, previously sometimes these meetings were in the daytime, three, four, does seven work? What, what's most appropriate for you guys?
Sometimes, yeah, we've met some like five, five-thirty, just.
Yeah, nothing earlier than that for me.
No, no.
Tell me where to be. I hate that you guys are here so late all the time.
All the time.
Same here.
Yes.
Would six o'clock be a good compromise, or?
Perfect. We get them out earlier.
Let's go for eighteen hun, uh, six o'clock, what day, and what date?
Is it typical day of the week that these are held?
I would try to avoid Tuesdays, as the city council is typically here. Thursdays, the planning commission is here, uh.
HDC, when?
HDC's on Wednesdays, but it could be.
Beginning of the afternoon generally. The beginning of the month is bad.
Beginning, yeah, that's true. So if we went. So if we went, you know...
That's what I was just thinking, Wednesday, the 12th.
Would, would like Wednesday, the 12th be good, or?
Oh, Wednesday, the 12th, that, that was 6?
6.
I can verify that the chambers are open, but if that's what you guys tentatively are okay with, that would, that's definitely a possibility.
Okay. Good for you, Joe?
I think so, yep.
At this point?
Got it now.
Got it.
Okay. All right, so our organizational meeting will be on January the 12th, in these chambers at 6:00 PM, unless I'm going into a conflict, yes. All right, is there any other old business?
I think we should vote on that, just to cover our bases.
Organization?
Yep.
Fair enough. I'm going to entertain a motion to hold our organizational meeting on January the 12th at 6:00 PM in council chambers.
Agreed.
These two.
These two?
Yeah.
You can put one and two on, you know...
And I believe we can do this by acclamation. Everybody in favor?
Hi.
Anybody opposed? It has passed. All right, now let's move on, any old business that needs to be addressed? Zach, from you?
None for me.
Okay. Nancy, do you have anything for us?
No, I have nothing. Not right now.
Okay. Let's work out the table here. Shelley?
None, thank you.
Okay, Linda? Yes?
I'm good.
John, you good? All right, there is no old business. And at this time, we do have on the agenda, we'll ask if there are any public comments from our large crowd here, so.
Any public comments? Marty, you're part of the public.
I would only make the comment that I would be cautious about over-correcting your definition of accessory use, because there are hardly, there are so many things that could fall into that category, that you don't necessarily want to start wholesale precluding things.
True.
There may be another primary use that has a drive-through accessory use that you don't find objectionable, and not every one wants that.
I don't think that we really questioned the definition of the accessory use, but where it's allowed. That's my opinion.
Well, I think, again, I think many businesses have the use for it, because either physically restructured or accommodated, they don't have the ability for the stacking in their, their product, Subway's never going to have a drive-through thing, because it takes a few minutes to make a sandwich.
You do in Travers, East Bay.
They do in Pennsylvania, too.
Jimmy Dunn.
But nevertheless, yeah.
But you're right.
Your point is well-taken, though.
We, we have to be cautious, but again, I think we also need to emphasize to those above and like city council, that we have got to get this stuff straightened out, so we do not have some of these issues. I know they won't want to, but I know I'm appearing before the city council...
Planning commission.
Planning commission on the 6th, and I'm bringing objections to them over some of, like the verbiage. And at the same time, I'm going to be addressing, with your all permission, the fact that they need to really get their act together and straighten some of this stuff out. Sound fair?
Sounds fair.
All right. With that, ladies and gentlemen, we're adjourned.
Right.
Thank you very much.